Well, everybody, we don't have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting in order, but we're just gonna take everything for, everything as a new item for consideration, and we'll just vote on any items that need action next month.
Let's still take public.
Yep, yeah, yeah, public, yeah, public comments, all those things, we'll move, we'll move forward with those things, and they'll just move everything to next month, then you can vote.
Thank you.
So Eddie, you've been sworn in, we cannot approve minutes, but we do have Lindsey Frye, who's gonna present to us about the Ponyberry Park, Pony, Ponyberry Park recognition request. That's a mouth, say it three times. Come on up Lindsey, if you could state your name and address, up to the front, please.
What was that?
Just state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone, I am Lindsey Frye, I live at forty-nine oh-one North Parker Street, that's in Bel Air, six-seven-two-two-zero. Been in Wichita a long time, but now I'm in Madison, Bel Air. Okay, so I'll kinda go through the slides at the end, I just have a few comments before I kind of just set up about what this is about. I grew in March only again, writing the area that is now known as Ponyberry Park, back in the nineteen-fifties, early, even as early as maybe the nineteen-forties, and worked for the city of Wichita to buy the land for the establishment of the park around the nineteen-seventies. In nineteen-eighty-six, the criticism was named Plumlee Trails in recognition of Plumlee's tireless work in creating and maintaining the trails that are still used today. There was a sound base and plaque dedicated to the Plumlees and parking lot on the southeast side of the park, as well as a wooden sign erected with Plumlee Trails as you enter the trails on the southeast side. I remarried the trails all daily, turning trees and bushes as she rode, and maintained the trails right up to just days before her death, which is, I think, she's about eighty-six. Ironically, both my parents grew up just one block away from where the Plumlees lived, and then would ride horses at the park with her as kids. My mom spearheaded the campaign to dedicate the trails to the Plumlees and the erection of the dedication structures staying at the park. My dad, Theron, more commonly known as Jerry Eugene Frye, was involved in this dedication, as well as assisting in the city establishing a park along with the Plumlees in the seventies. I grew up not only riding that park for the last forty years, and then just started as a baby, and helping clear and maintain trails, organizing rides and cleanup days, et cetera. My dad has continued the maintenance of the trails all these years, was racking up literally countless hours. He has carried chainsaws around the park, which he now leaves to the department maintenance department, sending coordinates of areas where the work is needed, carrying loppers and hand saws by either walking into areas of the park to do the work, but most often riding the park on horseback to trimming and clearing, rerouting trails, getting two danglers to use, mapping the entire trail system, working with the department maintenance department on bridges needing repaired, which he even paid with his own money to have the north bridge, some rework down there with the help of local Boy Scout tree. Adverbing them, water street is not working, trail signs visiting and vandalized, homes and cabinets, and contacting the park board or maintenance or local police patrol for many different reasons in regards to the park's safety and maintaining the integrity of the nature and wildlife of the park. The hours he has spent at the park in the last probably sixty-five years plus is truly astounding. He is now seventy-seven years old and still committed to the park, admitting it's hard for him to do so, even with me as a regular help all these years. I really and truly appreciate your time and your consideration for this dedication to ban. I truly believe deserves recognition from the city and community members for his lifelong commitment to establishment and preservation of this very unique park for Wichita, which for all intents and purposes would not be in the state it is today without him. Okay, and then you can look to the next slide. Yes, there's just a mouse in there for you, so you can go. Oh, I'm sorry. I gotcha. Okay, perfect. Okay, this is the picture that I had of Irene, I'm guessing somewhere in the nineteen-fifties. I, I can't say for sure, but I do probably believe it is out of Ponyberry, before it was a park, that she would ride that land area out there. This is also a picture in about eighty-six of Irene, another horsewoman that has ridden the park for years, and myself. And that looks very different from the parking lot I was there today. So that's, you can see some of the differences, but this about over here is where the memorial is to Irene, that stands in that parking lot. And here's the cake my mom had made for the Ponyberry Trails dedication in that eighty-six year, and has been the signage that was put out for that. This is the one that I was talking about for Irene. I don't know if you agree, but it's kinda hard to see on there, but for more than half a century, Martian Irene loved and enjoyed the development of the trails she enjoys today. For those who share the trails with them enjoying the simple pleasures, horses, nature, and their friendship, this is their legacy. And that was dedicated in nineteen-ninety-three. And then this is the guy, he, this is us out of Ponyberry in eighty-four on my little pony, which, no pun intended, but it's my horse that I have been, and this was out of the park in twenty-sixteen when we coordinated a ride of about, I think, about sixty riders came out that they were riding out there. And here's just a few photos of him. This is, it's hard to see, but he is completely, from one of us, we went out there on foot that day, working the trails. This is a bridge area that he had helped pay for and had the Boy Scouts put the drought land, some of the structures to hold it best from preventing washout. And here's all the pictures of him, like I said, usually on his horse, but there's always this, his chainsaw that he packs in sometimes. And this was somebody that was at the park that took a picture of him coming down, that would be Pony Street, the dirt road that runs, runs through part of the park. And so she was nice enough to send that photo to him. This is the structure that I'm, something in this area that I'm looking at for dedication for Terry Frye. Being made of steel would be powder coated. I'd like to do like a dedication plaque, either maybe hanging from the top or mounted underneath, not, not real sure what's gonna work out best on that. And then at appropriate time, I feel we're getting, hopefully getting off route, but appropriate time, have a tree planted next to that post as well. And I'll show you the area. This down here is South Parking Lot, and I'd really like to have it just somewhere in that open grassland, close to the Plumlee Trails sign. Looking to raise all the funds privately, so that should be able to cover, cover everything, and then if we do have extra money, I thought we could do maybe a stat entry or something, something like that, if we, if we surpass the goal. Just requesting of the city and the department maintenance department is just the installation and concrete of the, of the hitching post, and the planting and maintenance of a tree whenever that's possible for the, for the drought conditions. And so then about where would be planted is a view of, from out from that, so I'm looking, that would be west. So that's, that's what I'm proposing, I'm hoping we can get past or somebody that I think Miss Irene has spent by far the most time helping and maintaining that park, he's out there. He's usually out there a couple of times a month doing stuff, and we need to coordinate, we're trying to coordinate a cleanup day this fall, but then the rain caught up with us, which is fine. That, that worked for us, so we'll do another cleanup day of clearing out trails, and the department maintenance department has been fantastic in our request of the large tree, the trees that have come down, blocked trails, of getting out there and clearing those. That's been very prompt, and any other thing that we are concerned that they've been very helpful in addressing, addressing those that are kinda outside our abilities. But I guess, I'll leave it, if anybody has any questions?
Oh, just to clarify, it's just, you're, you're hoping to just get that dedication for that, the post structure, to be able to solid. Reggie from our end, I don't, I don't have an issue with it. It's not my district, I think that falls under nature, but we obviously, we can't vote on it today. But is there any approval that needs to come to the board about the design? I mean, if she's gonna raise the money, our only cost would be the cement, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, just the drilling for the post holes and cement. I don't, I, and like I said, depending on if you need a mount in, in the ground, there may be some of that, but I would pay for the mount and maybe if it needs a concrete base, and I'm not talking, you know, this huge thing, but something on the size of that is, is what I'm, I'm kinda looking at. But yeah, I would definitely have this, put it through, you know, for Reggie or whoever else needed it for the final approval, what it looked like, and what the dedication say.
And what she originally reached out to, I referred to the council member as well, to see if he was supportive of the situation in this district.
Yeah.
He was supportive of it, normally when we do these type of projects, fundraising piece and ongoing support of maintenance of it, it's normally by the group who's actually proposing it. So that would be the only thing that we would wanna see as we move forward, and you look at what the design would be and the fundraising efforts, to see how he would support that long-term, so that he can maintain it and keep it in good condition wherever it's at the park.
And that would be very, a lot of times, I even was thinking about going out, you know, and doing our own cleaning of Irene's plaque that's just from age and stuff, and just, we end up doing a lot of ourselves, a lot of times easier, and then we don't have to bother somebody else to do it, but yeah. And even if it needed like paint, touch up or whatever, I'm sure we would probably just handle that. I don't really see much ongoing maintenance, at least for now, for quite a, quite a while.
There, there isn't, they wouldn't need approval for design, I guess. I got, just wanna make sure that they, once they've got their dollars and things like that, and the sites are approved, they're ready to move forward.
We would want to actually see what it looks like to find a project, so the board can actually vote on this. That's what we wanna do.
We'll see her one more, we'll see Lindsey one more time.
Some engineering, you'll want to make sure, yeah, the C map, the right kinda C map.
Well, assuming Gary, you'll get involved, so yeah. But yeah, otherwise, the design piece, that'll come back to us one more time. Yeah, I don't have the issue with it, I mean, we can't.
Not a question, but more of a comment, that first of all, thank you for your enthusiasm, everything that you've done with the family, and it seems that we share a mutual friend in common, Nate Robertson.
Oh my gosh, Nate, yes.
Saying your praises and Terry's praises, and he fully endorsed it. I know we don't have a quorum here today to vote on it or anything, or even a design, but you've got my full support, so.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Can you tell us a little bit about, on a trail, is it for horses and pedestrians, or just horse?
For.
Trails, the horse trail, the trails.
Of the Plumlee Trails?
Yes.
That was, that was it dedicated, I mean, for her memory and for the equestrian trails, which are, most are shared by, by pedestrians, yeah. Yeah, most of them, most all of them are shared by pedestrians.
Somebody asked.
Yep.
Give my information, and if I understand right, there are no bicycles or?
There's, there's, there's no bicycles or bicycles. Yeah. But most of them, that's majorities, equestrians and pedestrians.
Thank you.
Well, if we don't have any other questions, thank you Lindsey, we will take this up next.
Okay.
You, from my end, you've got my support, we just don't have a quorum.
Well, thank you, I sincerely appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's all, up to this point, kinda guiding me on this, and if you guys have any questions or comments or direction for me, then yeah, by all means, let me know, what I can do. And then do I, do you need me back, I'm sorry, do I need me back here next week, or?
Our next meeting is the ninth of December.
Oh, definitely.
Does she need to be back, or can we just take it up?
I would probably recommend just being available in case there's some other questions from some of the other board members when they officially vote.
Okay, okay, we'll do, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, we don't have any continuation of prior business, so we'll move on.
That's all, yeah. See the one looking back saying you're, you're gonna lose or I'm gonna win. Yep. Thought of that.
Okay, good afternoon. Go, go through the financials through October. So as far as the revenue side goes, everything is looking pretty good. Overall, looking at about almost eighty percent to the budget. About four-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand left to go for like the, the next two months. Everything is looking pretty strong. Then also with the, on the expense side, I'm also pretty happy with, with everything going on, looking at, again, about seventy-eight percent, seventy-nine percent spent up to the budget. Run the projections, and we're looking really strong, and I'm not, I'm not really too concerned with, with the general fund this year. As far as cost recovery goes, like rec centers are doing pretty good, I'd like to see them increase about another one to two percent by the end of the year, just depends on how we do with the swin classism with, and some of those, some of the, the timing, the accrual timing on, on those, how that hits the accounts. I think we might be able to get there. Summer camps did pretty good. And Riverside Fitness Center still continues, like hitting at the ninety-three percent. The site last year, they were like around eighty-four percent, so they're doing really well with our, the new leadership change. As far as golf goes, everything looks really strong. Even being down, even having one of our busiest golf courses down the month, we're still looking really good. As far as the revenues, we're looking really good on the expenditure side, too. The unencumbered cash part of September, the month of September, was, we're at one million seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. And again, at the end of the year, we're gonna think everything that's over that one, that one million dollar mark, and throw it into the, that's all gonna roll over into capital, or into the projects for major upkeeps and things like that, cart trails, that type of thing. And it gives Jesse some, a good part of the money to, to play with and to buy equipment. And we're looking at strong cost recovery. And again, that's just money that we can invest, then put, put back into the, into the courses. Okay, with that, is there any questions on the financials? Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, Reggie, do you have any communication update for? City Council, the manager's office?
So probably the only thing I know, we started this month, we're doing an all-hands-on-deck meeting with the entire department in the transition to give updates on where we are, what we're moving forward. And I had Assistant City Manager Dante Martin, that just came out and gave an overview of what the actual hiring process looks like for a, a local position, and kinda what the next steps will be with that. They just gave an overview of what they typically do with the national search, and the entire would be the one that would kinda lead that process. Haven't gotten a timeline on when that's gonna happen yet, but they are starting to gather that information to be able to move forward. And once we have more details out, definitely get an update to, to the board.
Thank you. Questions for Reggie? Appreciate it, Reggie.
Eddie? So before I start on my social media update, I have a quick announcement to make as well. So those of you who've been on the board for a while may remember that every year we submit award nominations to KRPA, which is the Kansas Recreation and Park Association, so that we can recognize outstanding achievements within our department at our annual conference. And I'm pleased to say that our nomination for distinguished board member award has been chosen as the award winner this year. So this award honors individuals who provided exceptional guidance and expertise in overseeing and advising park and rec agencies, and whose dedicated service elevates the field. Our nominee has been known to describe the purpose of the park board as being a resource for staff rather than just a decision-making body. He asks insightful questions during staff presentations, questioning how the public will be affected, and what the impacts are to our natural resources, and it's clear to us that he does not take his role on the board lightly. Our nominee has been on the park board since twenty-eighteen and is currently our president. Join me in congratulating Alejo on this honor.
That's awesome. What? I don't have to put on a tie, do I?
Well, we'll send you details, but in January, we'll have, we'll invite you up to Manhattan during the conference for the awards.
That's awesome, wow, thank you, I appreciate that.
Very well deserved.
Thank you Eddie, I know you're talking to us.
So here is a quick overview of where we're at with all our social media pages currently. The follower counts are, are as always, just going up just a little bit steadily, but we're in our slow season, we're not gonna see these numbers change a whole lot for the next few months, probably. For the Wichita Park and Recreation page, last month's top post was about Penny's retirement. We were all very excited to wish her the best in her retirement, and though we were sad to see her go, this post saw fifty-seven interactions and reached about thirty-five hundred people, so a lot of people joining us and celebrating Penny. For the OJ Watson Park page, in October, the end of October, riot season ended, so there was a last push on Facebook to try to get people out for that closing weekend. Nascar Park, the big post in October was Blocktoberfest. That post alone saw thirteen hundred people that were reached by it, and the page overall was reached by sixty-five thousand people. Just a lot of posts about Blocktoberfest and the miscellaneous events we had there throughout the month. For Open Streets, of course, the Open Streets Douglas was held in October this year, so we did see a lot of interactions throughout the month regarding that event, but the top post was specifically about the vendor list at the College Hill Hub. There were almost six thousand people reached by that post. And then Golf Wichita, the top post was about the pros tournament that happened at the beginning of that month, and three teams turned out to outplay the pros, so good job to those teams. And that post also reached about six thousand people. That's all I've got for you, any questions?
Eddie, I brought this up prior to the meeting with you, but I'll go ahead and get it out on the record now. There's some concerns brought to me about a recent Facebook post, I believe it was today, potentially about the Nascar Park vendors, maybe the process there. I've, I've reached out to Kay, set up a call with her for tomorrow morning, just to kinda go through how that process is gonna look, Reggie might be able to talk. And how that, how we decided on. In my understanding, it's, we're only selecting one alcohol vendor for the March Madness deal over at Nascar Park. And how that is selected is, in my opinion, a little clunky, so maybe it's a conversation that gets to an RFP, potentially a qualification-based process, so that we can kind of, you know, any sort of fair bias.
Perceived bias.
Perceived bias, yeah, yeah. Make sure that we're, we're getting the best quality gear for the March Madness stuff. That's a huge event, obviously. Need to put our best foot forward there, not saying that, you know, the, the process is wrong, maybe it's something that we study a little bit.
I could definitely give an update on that, that's one of the ones that's gonna be on the recreation update, on what that process looked like, and how we actually put it out for people to be engaged as well.
Thank you for bringing that up, Eddie. All right, Eddie. Hey, Jesse?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, Reggie, I didn't mean to skip you, sorry Reggie.
Sorry, guys.
Reggie's wearing two hats, not bad.
So what do you have to say for the month of October and some of the activities that we have? And then a kind of overview of what's coming up with the March Madness fan festival. So Boston Rec Center, I'm not sure if you guys have seen the post that came out, that we had some analysts, one of the cameras there, that was there on site, and someone that actually come out, up shooting there in the area, and, and just one of the cameras. We were able to get some good footage of it, that worked with car images, and seeing we could try to identify that person. It resulted in about thirty-five hundred dollars worth of replacement cost to actually put a new camera in on site, so that's still active, something that we're looking for people to assist us with as we move forward. Leading into that, the nice weather in, in October has actually gotten, so we're seeing a whole lot more activity there at the park. Of course, it's come along, and we have some people that are doing some things that we would desire for them to do as well. The top program that we have there, a little summer, I actually saw an enrollment there, it was one of the programs that didn't make previously, but we did get that to actually make for the summer session. So Evergreen Rec Center has their Fall Festival every year, it's there in October, and we had eight-hundred-and-thirty people, thirty-three people that actually came out for that. It's a great turnout for it, it's something that's well attended every year for the more than any community when they come out and have a safe environment, with kids to come and participate in activities there at the rec. So that continues to be a lot of support from the community. Our rec center director there, Matt Martinez, is our lead for Old Street SIT that we had on October thirteenth, and we have just over thirty-five people that actually came out for that event, so really good turnout for that this year. So Great Plains National Center continues to do a lot of activities there, partnering with the school district, and getting people out to actually enjoy the trail there. As you can see, they had a regional SO meet for, for the first time since twenty-nineteen, which is getting a lot of high school students to the best of our law, after we get a chance to see the trails up there. And also we have a team that competed for different activities throughout the state that were involved there as well. We also had the ribbon cutting for one of the artists there, the Island Green, that did a bureau at the bathroom there on site, and then in conjunction, we put a bit there on the trail where we had artists, part on the trail, we had twenty-four artists that came out there on site, and had opportunity to showcase the art along the trail, and people get to see the actual location there as well. So Everwood Rec Center had their Halloween party on October twenty-fifth, had three-hundred-and-fifty people that came out for that particular event. East High School came out, had their junior arts teaching program, they helped out with the event as well, and volunteering part-time staff that we used their saved almost over eighteen hundred dollars in pay time that we would have had to use receipts or staff or volunteer support that we received. Our center director alone, several of our team members had an opportunity to go up to the, you know, our KDA conference this year. It was very well attended, I think the final number showing that we had over eight thousand people from around the US that were actually there on site for that event, so really good turnout for that. So Orchard Rec Center is another one of the events that we actually partnered with Salvation Army here in the area into a co-distribution, so they were one of our sites that we had in conjunction with Boston, that has rec center, as well as Evergreen, and Everwood and Orchard, that we actually, it's like hosted on site there for, community can come out and pick them up free of charge in conjunction with that partnership of Salvation Army. I said, they had a charity movie cookie night that was there, and that drove people to roll in that class, and they were able to participate, and actually, this celebration cookies there on site. Kind of last thing that Eddie mentioned earlier, so this coming here, we're the whole city in the NCAA tournament, Fan Fest event down at National Park. So one of the challenges that we have, that we have a lot of people that express an interest about being involved in it, so we took their post this year, being able to put it out similar to what we do with vendors for Open Streets. And we sent out a blast, we put it online for people to actually respond to it, and be able to see who wants to participate. So in order to do that, one of the challenges that we have with being able to have alcohol on site, you can only have one licensed vendor that's on that particular site that's serving alcohol at that particular location, so we put it out for whoever wanted to respond to it, to be able to do that and register. But we can look at that Eddie, and see what we can do moving forward, to see how we can expand that. We're doing the same thing with vendors that were on site as well, we have food truck spots that are available, and we're doing it where you can actually do it for all three of the days that we're activating it, at Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, where you can do it for two days.
So it was, just clarifying here, it was more of a first-cup, first-serve basis.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think we need to investigate that a little bit. The vendors, sure, there's, there's plenty of folks lining up that wanna do this. I wanna make sure that we're providing the most value, both to community members, people that show up for the games and hang out, but also for the, for the park. You know, if somebody, if that first vendor is gonna pay us a thousand dollars to be on site, but the second vendor's gonna pay us ten thousand dollars, there's some, there's some possible revenue, obviously, potentially on the table, so.
That's the way that we did initially, so that, and this is what we did all along. We had an option where you can actually do, it's a three-day timeframe. We can estimate a thousand dollars per day to have a slot that's there for the alcohol finish. It will be three thousand dollars for all three days. And if we didn't get someone who designated for all three days, then we'll open it up for it to do individual days that they can express. The person that came first actually selected to do all three days. And we got the same thing for the food truck options where we have six slots that are available along to St. Francis. We open it up, we're seven fifty for the entire day, or it's three fifty if you don't fill up. So we put it out for everyone to be able to respond and we're active as of today. So whoever comes in, and we will evaluate and look at the types of food as well. So if we have a vendor that comes in for someone else, whether it's duplicating something else we already provide, we'll look at that as well to make sure we get kind of that's right.
So we, so we haven't selected a food, a booze, an alcohol vendor yet?
The alcohol vendor was one slot that's available because maybe we've got some more specifics on that. I think when they get the license for it, the license has to be for that particular address. It can be one person that serves the alcohol on that site. So that's why it was one person for the alcohol.
We already chose them.
Yes, they've already submitted an application and paid the fee for it to be on site for those three.
Did that process occur, if you will?
It happened as of today, the person went online.
It happened today?
Yeah, I'd be.
Yeah, I don't want to come across as like, we want to just give it to the highest bidder necessarily. I think there needs to be an RFQ process, qualification-based process. And I'd be happy to sit on a panel, take time out of my schedule to, to sit on that if need be. But I think there needs to be a, we need to study that process a little bit.
We're definitely hoping to doing that. It's something that we've done with Open Streets and it's been the process that we use for years and events. We're always hoping to see what we can do.
How many, how many alcohol vendors have we, do we pick up for Open Streets?
Open Streets, we don't really sell alcohol at the Open Street events as much. You have to have designated area for the baby to block out where you can consume alcohol. So most of those are just food vendors and things that they have on site. There are some private businesses that may have on the Broadway that they sell alcohol, like you can look for this up near the hillside. It areas, they do it typically for Open Streets because it does have, does have a way for us to actually monitor who's actually doing it. Definitely everywhere it's being sold, that we know they're going to do it for that.
And there's six food vendors or six potential food vendors for Nascar Park, if that makes sense?
That's correct. We're actually going to do it right along St. Francis, where we're looking at having a basketball court. It's going to be the little area for games. And then three vendors on each side of that along for instance, St. Francis, right next to where the actual park is. And then the area that's there where the park is located in St. Francis, we've designated as alcohol area. Where that person with the license will be served within that area. So that's the only challenge we have with alcohol is, is the license typically requires a good footprint where it is and only to have one license on the site.
It's a process that we, we have used before, maybe at the women's tournament a couple of years back.
So when we did it the last time, for, we had, we did have an alcohol provider that would be there. We just opened it up for like activities and things that were there. Because it was such an interest for looking at people getting involved for this, that we look at the process that we're doing with Open Streets and try to just replicate that to be able to put the process in place where people can respond.
Last time, this rule has changed since then, but I believe it was that if we show the game, we couldn't serve alcohol there. It was kind of an NCAA. They've adjusted that since the women's tournament was here, which provided this opportunity. Is there a way to slow down on this, on the alcohol side and, and go to an RFQ process? Or do we, are we committed to, do we have to commit to this vendor?
Will you proceed the applications for the vendor? We haven't given fire approval. That's the reason we're moving in yet. We're taking it forward, starting as of today.
It sounded like you settled on a set fee, and then it was basically first come, first served, like.
We set the fee though, right?
It's going to be X amount of dollars and whoever gets here first, gets here first.
That's correct.
I would like to see a qualification-based selection.
We can definitely look at that.
Thank you.
You're a minimum qualification for fit trucks.
So they do have to go through the same process that we do for licensing and everything. And that goes to Isaac, who normally monitors to make sure that maybe those qualifications for food truck providers with the licenses and things that are to operate. So that is something that's.
Be nice for us to know what qualifications. Do you have my line? I think the food one's right.
Yeah, we'll be deciding that somebody.
Okay. Um. We, well, we don't have a warrant to vote on anything. I mean, and I guess now you could answer maybe, are we committed, is the city committed to this alcohol vendor, or is there a way to slow down?
I haven't.
Just admittedly, looked at this necessarily yet.
And it's.
I've just been in the meeting on Monday. So just sending Reggie a note now, just so I remember to touch base with him about this, and we'll have. And, I mean, if we send you all information via email, that's not an Open Meetings Act issue. So we can provide kind of an update potentially to the board, once we assess some of this stuff out. Eddie, is there anything that would flag you, that you see that would prompt you to say, all right, let's move forward with this the way it is? Or, you know, or do you, do you want to, do you want to, I guess, can we, do we want to try and slow this down and do an RFQ? If we're able to. I don't, I don't want to drag this on. I know this is happening in March, so we do need to have. I do want to suggest there's not really any action that you all can take right now. Because it's a quorum of it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, of course, we'll take all of your comments and as much as we can, try to provide that information.
Yeah, I don't even know who the vendor is or who the vendors are, so it's not like, I don't want this group or whatever. It's, it's more so, I want to open it up, make sure that we're providing the most value for everybody involved, so.
We did have a couple of groups that actually reached out to us and inquired about it. And that's why we thought that the process would be put out for any new sets of spots. That we need to look at something that we knew a little bit differently, like qualifications. What we mentioned was first come, first served, and to have those requirement, Isaac looks at before being able to buy the service as a vendor. So they do have to be those qualifications to be registered to stay, registered to the city, and provide that they have the proper insurance or anything that goes on.
Yeah, I mean, I keep coming back to, I'd rather look at a group of six to ten of them, rather than first come, first served.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the fee. I think I'd rather look at a bigger group because, I mean, I've been, and I've been, I've been a bartender at an event with a hundred people and a bartender at an event with ten thousand people, and those are two different things. I mean, and so I would, I would, I would want to do something similar. At the end, like Eddie said, not that they're, we don't, I don't even know who they are, so I don't know who or what. But we do want to make sure that the fans do have a good experience there.
And this is something we can look at in our business. We need to see. The only thing we did was put out an application online, register for it, etc. So we haven't given anything, a contract there at this point, to say.
Were more alcohol vendors able to submit applications after the fact, or did it close once that first one came in?
Yes, we did do it last time as well.
I guess we'll keep an eye out for an update. Thank you. Thank you, Reggie. Thank you, Nate. Thank you for bringing it up. All right. Now we're, now we're off to golf. Jesse.
Okay. Yeah, I'll try and keep this pretty short. The, for the month, we did a really good month in October. Our revenue was a hundred thousand dollars over last year's October. Probably the best month for that regard that we've had. So, okay, we go through your quick rounds. We're slowly catching back up from being close. So we're at a hundred and sixty-four, we're at a hundred and seventy-two thousand this point last year. So, you know, we're not quite in the match numbers from last year because of circumstances and all in all, pretty happy with where we sit. October rounds along, we broke almost two thousand rounds from last October. And the weather is absolutely perfect pretty much the entire month of October. So we had a little help to do it. Year-to-date, our rentals, we are nearly, probably about how we were called up till last year. I've got several bets that we would, I said we would catch back up. Others said there's no way, and we're about to do it, so I'm going to collect here in the head week. Food average, we're, again, after being close to Texas, we took a big hit, but we're still pretty much dead even with last year. A little bit over about three thousand dollars. But you can see Tex along was down significantly. So, you know, all things considered, once again. Drive range is up, I mean, it's up thirty thousand over last year, and last year it was up thirty, twenty-five thousand over twenty-twenty-two. So it continues to go up, but we kind of did the math. We've hit about two point five million golf balls a year on our drive range this year. They get, they get a lot of use. Year-to-date, March Madness sales were a little bit over last year. A lot of that is, it's on the back, and then Tex has really been doing well with the addition of the simulator this year. He's in a hot mic up till, as I mentioned before, so that's in a good place. Total revenue for the month, we did five eighty-three, I believe, in October last year. We did, well, we don't know, we did four ninety-five, I believe, is where we're at. So a lot better than last year. Total revenue for the year, we're up a hundred and forty thousand. But, you know, pretty, pretty happy all in all. Expenses are pretty much true about where they were at last year. So it's been a challenge. We're here. Project funds that Brandon talked about, we have one point, around one point two. These numbers change literally daily as we collect green fees and we collect car rentals. Two dollars and three dollars for those go into these funds. So a hundred and ninety thousand is in kind of the overall bucket that I could carry into these four months. Car fund is doing exactly what we designed it to do, so very happy with that. It can kind of go up instead of down, even after we make our payments each month. The equipment fund, we just did our annual fifty-five dollar annual equipment replacement fund. And we charge all members one half fee of fifty-five dollars, so this does not reflect that. So really, that number is probably closer to two hundred and ten thousand. And then, well, that's fine grounds fund. So, and then like Brandon said, at the end of the year, we'll probably transfer, I'm going to guess about eight hundred thousand at this point.
Do you have plans for those, that eight hundred thousand plus what you have left over?
Yeah, we have, we do. We have a five-year plan that we put together with the golf board. So we kind of prioritize them. It's, it's a business where those powers change as things happen. So, but yeah, we do have that plan. And then one of the things I was about to talk about is we just closed the RFP for the new irrigation for Sim. Can't get into it yet because we're, we're still going through the process, but pretty happy with the way that came back. Honestly, a little better than expected as long as everything shakes out the way it looks. So we're kind of, you know, holding matter until we see that is actually going to work out and make sure we don't need additional funding for that. And then the Fairways at Mac, that's been a shame on the how about this. We, you know, we had a lot of issues this year. Mac was not a good ship all year. We had all the American, we tried a couple of different things that did not work. Probably five weeks ago, we put down some grassy, and we finally got perfect operation from Mother Nature. The rains that came could not have come more perfectly, the time and the amount that we got. So the Fairways are, walked several holes today in the break of rain. And it's as green as it could be right now. So really optimistic on next year in the conditions where they're going to be. Couple of things I was going to mention real quick. With that rain that we've had so far this month, of course, you know, we don't get the revenue from the play, but if you look at just Mac alone, it probably saved us forty thousand dollars in irrigation fees. So even though we didn't get the revenue from green fees, it definitely, we came out in the end of that game with that rain. The ponds are overflowing right now. It's awesome to see that. We did this higher than the mechanic. It looks like he's going to come on board. Probably December ninth will be his start date, and to me, that's one of the most important things that's happened. I mean, that's going to be huge for our equipment to be able to keep it going, do the regular maintenance and keep up with all that. We do, it looks like after Friday, I'll be able to talk about this more. I can't get into it yet because it's not quite finalized, but I've got two really cool events that are coming to our courses next year. And I'll have a better update on that next meeting. But this, they're national level events, the kind of stuff that I really wanted to kind of get ourselves positioned for. So hopefully I can tell you more about that next, next month, but very, very excited about that. And then, of course, we're in the planning phase of the year. So there's so many projects on the table right now to get done over the next few months. Very exciting. Any questions?
We're one more project out there for you as we're planning FASI. Brought up maybe a month ago, maybe looking into the golf hoverboards.
I found out they did that at Texas. They had those out, I don't know, like twenty, twenty years, sometime before I paid. And I don't know, now I can't say if people even knew they were there. I have no idea. They said they did not, did not get rented out. I don't know. I wasn't here, so I don't know how they went about, you know, rolling that out. But I have looked into that, looked at a lot of stuff. There are minimal numbers that you have to get and so forth. So there's a couple of different companies that offer that. So, yeah, I'll, I'll data that a little more and you can do a better update next month.
Obviously, it's got to make sense economically, but I think, I was out at Mac, and that's, I got that wild idea. Just thinking about potentially looking around, giving, giving the golfers another option instead of the cart necessarily. It's just, that's kind of a cool deal. And I'm, I'm not sure if anywhere else has tried it that's been successful. But it's certainly something to dig into a little bit because it's kind of fun.
You got to know what he's talking about, especially what you call it. Scooter.
Golf board or something like that.
Instead of golf dart, you're on this scooter that holds your plugs, and then you're kind of like on a surfboard, person down the fairway. So it's pretty, yeah, PGA show, I got on one, took a hole over the place and had to kill myself three times.
Do all courses have wet water?
The three of the course, the other three courses do. McDonald's is not. McDonald's a little bit too far east for wet water.
Jesse. Gary, you're up, sir.
Good afternoon. Forestry, not really exciting this month. They're doing four things. They're doing inspections, curries, removals, responding to emergencies, just like they always do. We have a lot of the same thing every month that we do. It's kind of competitive, but yet when you get out into the field and do it, it's a little more exciting. But one of the things that's not listed here with community activity is we're going to be putting out Christmas lights, foresting and park maintenance. So that takes up a lot of that time, so production will be impacted, but it is every year. So that's not going to be a change year over year. Forestry is responsible for the lighting Christmas trees at the tennis center, the tree at Central Two, the tree at Old Town, and the tree at Nascar. And the park maintenance is responsible for all of the other decorations that, that you see in the downtown area. Concertion, Concertion Project Section, these guys are always busy. There's an incredible amount of fence and cable repair on this list. I'll let you read that, but I want to definitely point out the amount of graffiti that has been removed. You can see about the middle of the page, Nascar Park, Three Year occasions, Plague New Park, Spruce Park, West Douglas Shell Park, North Woodland, Schweer, Signal Park, Victoria Park, Keeper of the Plains, and the Art River from second to second. That's just in October. So these guys are busy with a lot of things, but graffiti, that would be a great thing. We didn't have to do that. A lot of other things. Again, more replacements, playground equipment and cables and bollards. Lots of different areas where we did playground replacements, Murrow Park, but it were, it's more park. Kind of more of the same, just different locations. So key piece of information there is the three hundred and twelve playground safety inspections that get done. Those generate those orders that identify the playground replacements that need to be made. The various parts that are not in compliance, the damage, the, not the graffiti, but vandalism is the word we're trying to use. So that happens, that gets observed, various parts of playgrounds get shut down because of it necessary. But it gets fixed as quickly.
But it gets fixed as quickly as possible. Other than that, we did a lot of ADA and 99 due to Showmobile distribution. At one point last month, the supervisor told me of 12 weekends. There were 11 weekends that they were putting out a Showmobile. So these guys are very dedicated and they support the community and a lot of the activities that happen in the community in ways that are rarely seen, but are certainly important. And. I just want to give them a shout out because they, they say they're the business of these. Also had the WIS regional cross country meet in Clap Harbor with the cross country track that is there. The cross country, it's not really a track, it's a course. And to do that and keep the runners safe, we roll out. Astro turf over the new bridges and the sidewalks where the course intersects the sidewalks. The runners actually have pleats and levels on their shoes. So if they come across that. Concrete, they're going to slip and fall. So we do that for their protection. We're, we're exploring more long-term solutions. Putting out that Astro turf is not necessarily an easy task. And it does take up quite a bit of time. That issue does participate in that. So it's not just a hundred percent on our staff. There, it would really be best if we came up with a long-term solution and our staff is working on that as we speak. So. There's, I don't know how many of you know about or have seen the various shade structures and the canopies that are at pools and. Different athletic sites, a lot of those are not snow rated, so they have to be removed. So we're busy taking those down. We have a lot of wood chips that we put out during the winter and they're just regular wood chips. They're engineered with fiber. It's a specialized and specially. Treated wood fiber that doesn't give it, get slender for them to play on the playgrounds. So there's a lot of different playgrounds that have that. We're taking delivery now of. Tons and tons and tons of it across the city and we're going to be spreading that out at the various playgrounds that they're requiring over the winter. So I think that's the last slide for that. Park maintenance, didn't have any slides of park maintenance, but we're transferring, transitioning rather, from summer mowing and, and maintenance of that sort to fall, winter projects. Our winter project list is always longer than the winter that we have. So we don't really have a slow season. It's just busy doing other things. But like I said, one of the things that we're going to be doing this month is assisting with curries. So we've got a lot of this to do. Anyway, it's maintenance.
Gary, who's going to maintain the. The loos, the new loos over at Asker Park?
Well, I believe that. And I know I have the documentation back this up, but from a custodial standpoint, there's already a contract through a couple of works to do custodial services in our park bathrooms. I would imagine that these would be the same way.
So not underused it?
Well, the, not necessarily.
Yeah.
Well, we're part of course, we would probably handle the custodial contract.
Did you assist with Christmas lights at my house?
I believe that would be a violation of our. Darn it. That was we were applying public resources to a private industry. I don't think we should do that.
Gary, thank you for the offer. Do you think you spent a month or the city spends a month on graffiti removal?
Libra hours. I don't know the answer to that, but it is on our portal. But in, in, I'm sure you that portable for it, I'll be seeing now. You should have access to it. So if that link doesn't work, I know they just redid the server or changed servers. So, but I know that that is an interactive map so that you can actually narrow it down to the month, the year, hundreds of years. So I believe that information is readily available, but I don't have it on top of my head.
Other questions for Gary?
Thank you. Oh, by the way, to that point, that information is updated every day. It's, it's not every month, so it should be current.
Thank you so much. All right, Doug, do you have an update for us from the Park Foundation?
Well, Park Foundation didn't have a forum either. But, but what we did, what's going on is they're starting their strategic plan, RFPs. And we made some changes to kind of scale it down. And so we're going to, we're going to be a strategic plan for 2025 here in the next couple of months.
And I'm assuming you and Reggie will both be participating in it?
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's not hope it gets poor. And I don't have an update. I'm just waiting for Reggie in the, and I guess manager's office more than anything on next steps for filling our, our director role so that we can move on to our strategic plan. So I don't think, I don't think we'll move forward with this strategic plan until we have a director. So, so that happens, we'll, we'll be at a holding pattern, but the dollars are there. So once we find a director, then we can start that whole process. Reggie, you got an update for us?
Just one thing that I want to point out, when you finish up our proceeds this year, we're partnering with USD 259 for football. Thinking really well, we are following up now, getting some requests from some of the area schools that want to join us for next year. So we're looking forward to that, getting going. We are already started putting information out on the website where it's going to look like for next year, starting a conversation with USD 259 for them hiring coaches for a middle school program. And then how we align those youth programs with the high schools and their feeder's that they're going into. So it's worked well for the first year and getting a lot of interest from some.
So the teams then, are they just like middle school, like per each middle school base?
So the way it'll be aligned, they will be feeders up to the high school program. So the middle schools, of course, will go to the high school and then elementary to the middle school. And then go along and those will kind of be kind of East High Junior.
Okay. So like three middle schools could make up one football team type of thing?
That is correct.
That's awesome. That's really cool. That's hard to this year?
It's going to start for next.
Okay.
Twenty-five.
That's great. That's really cool. Thank you for sharing. All right. We don't have any questions or anything else. Guess our meeting's adjourned? Want something, Eddie?
Over here.
I can get it offline.
It was over here. I was.
Thank you.
I never thought that guy, the date was talking. Here, but I was here. So I bid up to.